Go ahead and call the May I won meeting, the USD four thirty-one to order. Roll call, Sarah Tarleton is not present and Jessica Bays is joining us via Zoom. The other five of us are present, so. Item three, adoption of agenda, have several changes. Item six C will be acceptance of bid for lease purchase of turf and track. Six D will be acceptance of bids for HVAC building control systems. And then down, item nine is consideration of district personnel. We will add item ten, which will be consideration of student information, which will make negotiations eleven and adjournment item twelve. So I would move to adopt the agenda as modified with the following additions to old business. Acceptance of bids for lease purchase of turf and track, item six C. Item six D, acceptance of bids for HVAC building and control systems. And then item ten, consideration of student information. Change negotiations to item eleven and adjournment to item twelve. Motion been made in second, any discussion? Not all in favor? Posed, motion carries six zero. Opportunity for visitors. Seen it quiet night, no visitors, so we'll move on. Consent agenda. We're not to a point where we have the reports from Skyward. The dollar amounts have not been migrated over from F A two. April financial reports will be included in the June consent agenda. We have the other items, basically the minutes of April third, April tenth, and April seventeenth.
And there at your table, I put an AP check register. These are just some of the AP runs that we've done so far. We are getting caught up and trying to, but there's a plethora of information that we have access to do reporting on, we just don't have the information that's been migrated over. So this is just one example of some of the information we can provide to you, so.
Any other questions on the consent agenda?
I move to accept the consent agenda as presented, second.
Motion been made in second, then to adopt the consent agenda as presented. All in favor? Posed, motion carries six zero. Item six, old business approval of Chromebook bids, Mr. Pratus.
Carrie went ahead and was able to get bids for Chromebooks for this coming school year. We're purchasing a hundred and seventy of those, it's our normal rotation based on the numbers of students that are coming through. S H I had the best bid, a hundred and seventy Chromebooks for forty thousand, two hundred and twenty, two hundred, forty-two dollars and forty cents. And I would recommend that we go with the bid from S H I, that's a company we've used in the past. And we, Carrie looked around at others that I had recommended because I was told that they could get us pretty good deals and they turned out to be the highest bidder, so. Or, yeah, the highest bidder, so. So. And this year, as of right now, we will, at the acceptance of this bid, we'll get them ordered. We'll pay them and we'll have them shipped. Because last year, we kind of waited for some money and we were like right on the cusp and so that wouldn't happen. Yeah, yeah, August twelfth and they rolled out three days later, so. So.
I move to accept the Chromebook bid from S H I in the amount of forty thousand, two hundred and forty-two dollars and forty cents as presented.
Second.
Motion's been made in second to accept the Chromebook bid from S H I in the amount of forty thousand, two hundred and forty-two dollars and forty cents. Any other discussions, not all in favor? Posed, motion carries six zero. Item B, review of strategic plan.
I went ahead and provided the strategic planning information that Gary Seacrest has provided back with us. He has offered to come back and meet with the administrative team to go through the long-range planning, to start working on how to accomplish some of these things and then to present it to you as the board. So I just encourage you to take some time to look through that. See if there's anything that, I mean, all of this information were things that we discussed at the meeting that we, or the meetings that we had and provided information from the community, so. Great opportunity and then he and I and the administrative team, and we've even talked about having our BLTs be a part of some of that as well. And then we'll bring back to the board some suggestions as to how to accomplish those things that have been suggested to us.
Any questions on any of that review? If not, we'll take time to look at it and look forward to what you, the administrative team comes up with.
And if I have not, this will be for those that are viewing or want to see on the board packet, this will be a public, I mean, I will make that document public. So people can see actually what took place. So I'll double check those privileges and make sure that that is a public document.
Thank you. We'll go to item six C, the proposal from Wilson State Bank for the turf and track improvements.
Went ahead and contacted First Kansas Bank and Wilson State Bank. First Kansas Bank declined to bid. Wilson State Bank was very interested in going ahead and moving forward with working with us. They did give us a proposal of four point seven nine percent for five years with approximate payment of two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, six hundred and thirty-six dollars, which was down from the estimated seven percent that we were looking at last month. Then I will work with Gilmore and Bell to finalize the paperwork with Wilson State Bank and have that resolution to the June board meeting. And just being a hundred percent open, we bring in over four hundred thousand in capital outlay every year. So this is where that will be paid out of, just as a reminder, so.
Any questions on that item? No, I moved to accept the proposal from Wilson State Bank for the turf and track improvements in amount of one million dollars with an interest rate of four point seven nine percent, the approximate payment of two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, six hundred and thirty-six dollars annually for five years. Motion's been made in second, any other discussion? Not all in favor? Posed, motion carries six zero. Item six D, accept bid for HVAC building control systems.
If you do take a look at under the superintendent report, I placed these things, placed this in there. This is a, this is a report that was generated from E S P. So the plan was to replace all of the building control systems in the entire district, including this building incorporates some of Lincoln, Roosevelt Middle School, High School, and the Activity Center. Due to the cost, part of that being with using the ESRA money, we have to meet the Davis Bacon wage criteria, which is a higher criteria than if we were just to pay for it out of capital outlay, which elevated the cost. Then, you know, there is some associated costs with working with E S P, which we've talked about along the way. So to make this happen within the budget of the ESRA money, which I budgeted six hundred and eighty thousand dollars for ESRA money, that would, that would mean that the bolded areas is what we will be able to actually accomplish. So that would include the entire building control system at the Activity Center, the entire building control system at the middle school, and the entire building control system at the high school. That would leave this building off, Roosevelt off, and Lincoln has its own building control system that we are not tied to at all right now. So Lincoln would actually not change for us. So it would be this building and Roosevelt. Now, half of the building at Roosevelt is controlled at the building level by old Mercury thermostats right now. And then we have the control to be able to go in and turn those off and on. After talking with E S P, they suggested that we look into Nest thermostats. With a Nest account, we can control up to three buildings and twenty thermostats per building to be able to have some remote control as to what takes place within that building and this building. So this weekend, I was going to buy a couple of them so we could test it in this building and they were sold out of them. So the plan is to test this building to see if we can actually make it work the way that we think that we can make it work and then incorporate those into Roosevelt this summer. So that's the reason for not doing the entire project. And then as I talked to E S P more about it too, they said, obviously, we would be tied to Dynamic Control System, which is the company that I would like to go with. And then eventually, we could work Roosevelt, which would be the priority, and then this building into that building control system as well. And if we did that, that would be at a lesser cost unless I have to, like I might be able to incorporate in semester two money if we have that available. I have to look at that budget again to see if we have semester two money that we might be able to reallocate to that building control system information. So my recommendation is to go with Dynamic Control System. This is a company that came in as the lowest bid to replace the building control systems at the Activity Center, the middle school, and the high school. And then accept that bid from them. And we also interviewed them, Dean was kind enough to come in and work with us to set in on that interview. They presented their system to us and we feel comfortable with moving forward with that company. So questions? I'll be quiet.
I might just add the one additional cost we may get into at the middle school. Those, the current system is a pneumatic air controller for the actual valves that do the switching. And that is old technology. And the newer electronic technology, they can put a patch in to make it work. But really, to do it right, you need to change out the controllers in that, in those set of valves. I think there's forty valves.
Forty valves, yep.
But that's not in this bid because that's a plumbing issue, not a control issue. So they really won't know until they get in to investigate what those things are, actually are. It may be a cheap fix and it may not.
Right.
But what they're proposing will work. It's just there's a better way to do it if it's workable, so.
So, and there is a contingency fund of thirty-one thousand there as well to help offset some of that cost as well.
But this company, I was impressed, they said if you have a problem, then call, you will actually talk to a real person, not get into an automated system and and that they will address the issues and stand behind what they're doing. Is that a fair assessment, Carrie?
And the software will be updated along the way, not like what we've got now where the software has deteriorated over time.
And it's web-based so that we're not tied to a specific licenser of this computer and this computer. We can have a lot of, we can get to it from any spot. Or Tyler then can start carrying a lot of stuff with him instead of having to go fix it, run back up here, check the software, run back over there. He can have it all right there with him, so.
By no means an HVAC expert, but they made a
Me neither.
They made a good presentation and Tyler was very supportive of this recommendation. And I think, Carrie, you were comfortable with interfacing with your computer systems. You've got capacity to make it all work.
We have the server space to build it and run it as powerful as we need it to run. And what I liked about them too is we've had issues in the past with B C S where they want, you know, they drive out, we get charged mileage, you know, mileage back and forth. They hit us with a, not the hourly rate for their technician, but the driving rate, which is less than that. And then if they can do it remotely, they'll sit there and just do it remotely and then we just get hit for the time that they're actually working on the system and no travel time, so. And we'll set it up where they can work remotely.
And Tyler's talked to the gentleman that came out and walked through all of the buildings multiple times. And so there's already a positive relationship there with him as well, so. They are a smaller company, so, but they're willing to give us their numbers so we can contact them when we need issues, so. Timeframe on this project, we're probably looking at least, at least three months. Probably sixty days before they're ready to actually like have materials on the ground. And then they are also working on another system in Newton. So I would say ninety days is probably the least amount of time that we would be looking at. But they also said that they work ten, four tins. So they would be able to be in our buildings in areas that don't have children in them whenever they can. But then, you know, after the buildings are cleared out of kids, they would be in the buildings working at that point in time as well, so. Flexibility on the work schedule as well.
So we're really talking September, October timeframe to get started, so.
Yep, yep. Another, I mean, this is just a small little thing, but when the weather starts to get cold, they bring everybody in their office and start calling all of the clients, saying, hey, you know, we noticed this is an oddity in your system. We noticed that when the temperature drops, you've got this area that gets real cold. So they individually call all of the clients to start having them think about areas that they might need to target whenever things get cold, which I was kind of impressed with that as well, so. Kind of good customer service deal. I know Tyler does a good job of thinking a lot of that stuff, but that doesn't necessarily leave it to be on his shoulders a hundred percent, so.
Any other questions or discussion? No, I moved to accept the bid proposal from Dynamic Control Systems for the HVAC building control systems with modifications to allow for E S S E R three funds to fund the project.
Second.
Motion been made in second, any other discussion? Not all in favor? Posed, motion carries six zero. I believe that takes care of old business, we'll move to item C, new business, proposed handbook changes.
So in your packet is enclosed all of the building, all of the building handbooks. As of right now, middle school handbook is last year's handbook. Still waiting on their revisions and I will update that as soon as possible and get that out to you as soon as possible. The other ones, Lincoln, High School, and Roosevelt are all the suggested updates for those as well. And then I will also provide you with the staff, the bus, and the substitute handbook by the end of the week. So you have a chance to look at those prior to the June board meeting. Any questions on any of those?
Be another one if we, if you take time to review those between now and June, then come back with questions that you might have or see what you think of those.
Or if you have questions between now and then, just shoot me a message and we'll find that out for you.
Good item B, approval of the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four OPA agreement.
This is an annual approval for the state level, even though we're in a five-year agreement with OPA. Every year, the state allows them to make changes. The threshold was six point eight percent that they could increase and they took advantage of that full six point eight three percent, so. So the student lunches, our cost will be nine, two dollars and ninety-one cents. Student breakfast, a dollar and ninety-four cents with, it's actually to the fourth decimal place, so. Student after-school snacks, a dollar and twelve cents. And then the prices for the summer food service program. Breakfast are two dollars and four cents, lunches, three dollars and six cents, snacks a dollar twelve. So. So this is a six point eight percent increase from last year, so. So I would recommend going in and approving that. And then we will probably talk about, you know, whether or not we want to raise our prices. Over the last two years, we've raised it a dime. So I know that's, I know that's something that's not a popular thing to talk about, but, I mean, that's something that we can discuss as well, so.
And that would have
That would, I don't
Wouldn't quite cover the cost
Right.
Increase that we're planning, so.
Yeah.
But that's another discussion. This is just to prove the contract with OPA.
Just to approve this contract with OPA in state food service.
And if I remember right, we have to stay within a certain level for the state requires it to be within.
Yeah, so I'll get that information out to you guys because they don't want us to slip too far back. But I mean, I think there's some, you know, for years, we had not really raised our prices and so that was why they kind of suggested. Three years ago, my first year here, they did our food service audit and then recommended that we make that change. But we were also given free lunches at that point in time. So we made a nickel increase in June of twenty-one and then another nickel increase in June of twenty-two. So over a two-year period of time, we made a dime increase. But during those two years, we were in full free lunches, so. So I mean, it didn't, it didn't immediately have an impact, but but it, you know, this year was the first year in three years that we've charged, so. For the most part, that's been okay. I mean, our food service is still solvent, I mean, we still have plenty of money in food service. But food service doesn't want you to, state food service doesn't want to get you behind where you're having to supplement that too much. I believe the budget, whenever I got here, had a transfer of about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars to food service out of general fund, which, looking back on the past, I believe about seventy-five percent of that was transferred each year to make to make, to make up for, you know, the losses. And then for a couple of years, we were making money in food service because it was free and the reimbursements were higher than what we were paying out. And then over the last two years, OPA has increased their prices to match the increase in food costs. And so now we're about, we're about even with where, where we need to be.
What percent of our students are in the free and reduced level?
So free, uh, free lunches were at about fifty-five percent. And then there's probably another, another probably ten percent that are in the reduced area. The, that number fluctuated just a little bit because they made some changes to how they calculated the free lunches. So this year, the majority of our free lunches were what they called direct certification. So there's a set of criteria and the state basically sent us saying, these, these students already qualify. We don't need to take an application. These, these are just already certified as, as free. And so that kind of pulled some of the kids over to free that have normally been in reduced, in the reduced lunch area. So we're at about fifty-five percent for free and then, you know, calculating all that in overall, about, about sixty percent free and reduced.
Part of the reason, this goes back many years, was this same debate. You've got about sixty or sixty-five percent that are having free and reduced. When you increase their price, you're adding that on to the, the students that are, are not free and reduced. And at some point in time in the past, the decision by the board was to subsidize that through general fund monies rather than raising the meal, passing it on the meal cost. So that's a little of the history of.
Good, thank you.
Why, why that happened and it's a philosophical debate, how, how you want to pay for it. Whether we take it out of the general fund or the kids that are actually getting the meals, so.
Yeah.
And I don't have a good answer to which is right, so.
And there's, yeah, and there's.
Good points from both sides.
Good points for both sides and I appreciate that, that, that history because, you know, the, the criteria is hard and fast. I mean, I think, I think in the past, there was maybe a little bit of gray area that maybe you could appeal and get somebody over to, you know, maybe a reduced area or a, or a free area. But the criteria has become very hard and fast. You know, for example, you know, a family, a family could have an increase in pay and be two hundred dollars over the, the limit and be full pay. So, so I mean, that, that family then at that point in time goes from being, you know, on, on free or reduced, you know, to full pay in a matter of, you know, a five hundred dollar, you know, annual swing. So, so it could make a, could make a huge difference in a family, so.
We could have that discussion when we go to set the prices.
I'll have more information for you on that, so.
So is everybody okay with the annual agreement with OPA? I move to approve the annual agreement with OPA as presented.
Second.
Motion been made in seconded. Any other discussion? Not all in favor? Posed, motion carries six zero. Item C, approval of iPad purchases.
Carrie sat down with Ms. Walker and talked about the pros and cons of moving from Chromebooks to, to the iPads. And I believe they had some compelling, compelling information. One thing to, to keep in mind as well is over the last several years, our old Chromebooks have been kind of just shifted down to Roosevelt. And so that's been a, an area that, you know, sometimes it's a good thing, sometimes it's a bad thing. But educationally, Mrs. Walker felt like that the building could use the iPads more effectively instead of the, instead of the Chromebooks. This would be probably a, a seven and eight-year commitment versus a four-year commitment that we do with our Chromebooks. So it is a little bit more expensive per, but not much. You know, as, as there was some discussion before, you know, Chromebooks used to be less than two hundred dollars. Now they're over two hundred fifty dollars and, and we're, you know, we're, you know, whereas iPads are coming down in price as well. So the recommendation is to go ahead and go with a generation nine, which is a, a one-year older model. Still all new iPads, correct? Still all new iPads for a total cost of twenty-nine thousand nine hundred dollars.
Mrs. Walker, would you like to comment on that?
Well, so my staff brought it up to me, um, just at a random meeting, just their concerns with the kiddos using the Chromebooks. Just, um, and educationally, why, I mean, like honestly, our kiddos, their hands don't even really work on the Chromebooks because their hands are tiny. And so as far as like learning keys and stuff, that was very difficult. So I, I told them, I said, just give me conversation, but I need a good list of pros and cons. Cause I can't just go to Carrie and say, hey, we want iPads. That's, that's not going to be sufficient enough. So, um, we had a really good meeting. They gave me a list of pros and cons, um, you know, with Chromebooks, Chromebooks versus iPads. You know, obviously they were all for Chromebooks. I thought their reasoning's were good, just educationally. For our kiddos, we felt like there's more that we can do with them on an iPad. There's more access for them as far as apps and such that we can do with them on an iPad. You know, we talked to Carrie about if, if need be, you know, because we have technology standards. We could certainly leave three or so Chromebooks in each classroom. That way, um, you know, we can still meet those technology standards. But after, after we looked at the standards, a lot of them could be met on the iPad. So that's not doing any damage there. So Carrie and I got together, having a wonderful, wonderful conversation, um, just about the pros and cons and where the Roosevelt teachers were sitting on their feelings with the iPads and Chromebooks. And in the end, he looked at me and said, so you want, you want iPads? And I said, yes. So, um, I mean, yeah. That's, that's how it all came about.
Any other questions?
Move to accept the bid for gen nine iPads from Apple in the amount of twenty-nine thousand nine hundred dollars as presented.
Second.
Motion been made in seconded to accept the bids from, for gen nine iPads from the, from Apple in the amount of twenty-nine thousand nine hundred dollars as presented. Any other discussion? Not all in favor? Posed, motion carries six zero.
I'm sorry, I would also state that this would just be K one because our preschool and our TK classrooms, they already, they already have iPads. So that also gives us unity across our whole building, um, as far as what technology they're using.
Okay, thank you.
You don't have to sell them now. They've already approved it.
Okay, uh, we'll move on to item A, reports, Mrs. Walker. We just got you warmed up.
Yeah.
Well, good evening. So tonight we had our second annual art show for our transitional kindergarten through first grade students. Mrs. Kraft and Ms. Melissa put this all on. It's really like an art walk all through Roosevelt. So last year we talked about, I think we had a hundred and sixty-three or a hundred and sixty-five individuals come through. Tonight we had two hundred and twenty-nine. So it was an awesome, awesome turnout. And I mean, the kids love showing off their artwork, so they were really, really proud. So kudos to both Mrs. Kraft and Ms. Melissa for all of their hard work put into that. We will celebrate teacher appreciation week next week, so it'll be May eighth through the twelfth. Kindergarten has their field trip to Larned. They go and they watch a movie. And then they're going, they're making a pit stop at the Great Bend Zoo and they're doing that on Wednesday, May tenth. They take sack lunches with them for that. We will have our Roosevelt relays on Friday, May twelfth. This is a very exciting event for me. I absolutely love putting this on. So if you have a chance to come out and watch these kiddos compete, it's like a legit track meet with some other fun stuff going on around. So I have to say thanks to Farin because he gave me a, a great business out of, I want to say McPherson, that we ordered some really cool ribbons from. So they get like real ribbons and everything, so very excited. But that will be Friday, May twelfth at the high school from noon to two thirty. I also have to shout out to Joel and Mr. Schremer because they play a big part in, in helping me get this all so it works, so. On Monday, May fifteenth, our TK kiddos will take a field trip to Sternberg Museum. Last year was our first year they went there and so they had a phenomenal time. So Mrs. Edgerton is going to take them back this year. Our pre-three, pre-four and TK, so our pre-three and pre-four, they don't take field trips, but they do have like a playdate at the park. So they will do that on Tuesday, May sixteenth. And then on the last day of school, on Wednesday, May seventeenth, our first grade will take their field trip to Rolling Hills Zoo in Salina. And then on Thursday, May eighteenth, we have a teacher duty day. I'm sorry, Roosevelt teachers, but we have stuff to get done. So we will have, we do our end of the year sit meetings. So what we'll do is we'll take all of our students that have been placed on sit. We have their current teachers meet with their future teachers just to communicate on, you know, why they were on sit and, and stuff like that. Also, we'll have a building leadership team meeting to discuss our, our family engagement events. And then we will be finishing up module five from our resilience training because we did not get through all of it last Wednesday. So. Any questions? Thank you.
Mrs. Callen.
We just had our field day at Lincoln. We had to move inside to the activity center because of the weather, but it was still a lot of fun. We did twelve different centers and the students got to rotate through them. Then we did some running races. It was very, very loud. But if you get a chance on our Facebook page, there's some live videos of it and not a single frown. So it was a fun day. We have our end of the year field trips coming up. The second grade will go to see a movie and go bowling. The third grade is going to the Pioneer Day in Great Bend. Fourth grade is going to Dillon Nature Center and going to go canoeing. Then the fifth graders go to the alley. May sixth is our flower pickup from nine to twelve. Looking at a new method of distributing the flowers this year out of the gym, give us a little bit more space. Flowers that are not picked up will be sold at twelve. So if anybody bought any flowers, and that's this Saturday. We're doing fast bridge testing this week. We also finished our state assessments last week. It went really smooth this year. We had our audit. Our auditor was very impressed with our paperwork and said we did a great job, so great feedback there. Our art show and summer startup event is May ninth from five thirty to seven o'clock. We'll have our art show in the gym and a book fair and some different booths from people in town talking about things that are going on this summer. And I think there's going to be somebody from GPS and, and the wetlands and the summer library program just to tell parents about different things in the summer for our students. So looking forward to that. May eighth, we're celebrating our teachers for teacher appreciation week. On Wednesday, we're having a meal provided by HEPA and a special band performance at twelve thirty out on the playground. And anybody's welcome to come attend, bring a lawn chair. So that'll be neat. First graders are visiting Lincoln on the fifteenth to get a little tour and meet their teachers and just get accustomed to Lincoln. I always love their questions when they come over. I think I got asked when recess was and how long it was, like fifteen times last year. So it's always nice to get to see them. Honor roll is on the seventeenth. Fifth grade is going at ten o'clock. And we wanted to make it a little bit special just for them since they have a lot of awards. Plus the second graders have a hard time sitting through that many awards. So they're going to get their own little assembly. And then fourth grade will go at twelve and then second and third grade will be together at twelve forty-five. Sightseeing May at Lincoln. Any questions? Thank you.
And Mr. Brungart is in Dallas with the robotics team.
Yes.
So I'll let you.
Yes, so, so as you can, you can read the, his report there. Again, exciting information going on there, there in Dallas. They, they traveled down on Saturday, took the day and did some sightseeing yesterday and then started the competition today. They were, they were there at nine thirty in the morning and then I think the last one finished up, what, at six thirty? Six thirty this afternoon. So then they'll be back again, first thing tomorrow morning to do, to finish out the fight, the, the, the initial rounds and go ahead and see, you know, see who would, who qualifies for the, for the final round. So and then as we found out last year, they do some little awards at the, at the areas, the stations that they're at. So I believe last year there was only right around seventy-nine in each area. And there's, there's well into the eighties in each area this year. So, so a lot bigger competition, you know, so some of us have been watching online. And if you want that information, we can sure provide that to you as well to, to kind of watch. It's just interesting to see what the designs are, so. Turn it over to Mr. Flowers for more information about the middle school.
Okay, so leadoff, as you said, robotics is down currently in Dallas competing at Worlds. So far they've competed well, showing determination and grit. Looking forward to seeing how they finish out the remainder of the next couple of days. Track has been competing well this season. We've seen a lot of growth in several areas and seeing new records set and some broken. This year was the first year javelin was offered to middle schoolers. Currently, Kayden Chambers has the long for, with a hundred and six feet, two inches. Kobe Crawford set a new triple jump record, breaking one set from two thousand thirteen. Sophia Simic set both the hundred and two hundred meter hurdle records. And Addie Hanslick set the javelin record at ninety-four feet. Remaining for track this year will be two competitions. One is tomorrow at Ellsworth. And then May eighth, they'll travel to Hillsborough for the C K L meet, which will be an all-day affair. Tennis has been doing amazing this season. We've seen fabulous effort and a ton of growth this year. Some kids who've really grown, especially from last season. We just had our home meet last week and we host one more tomorrow as well. And then that'll be our last hosted event. And then they will finish out their season this Saturday at Smoky Valley, starting at nine AM with the league event there. Other events coming up for our building include dodgeball tournament starting on May tenth, promotion on May twelfth. With that, pre-enrollment has begun for next year with our fifth and sixth graders already getting theirs completely finished. We are at four seventh graders who still have to complete theirs. But otherwise, out of almost two hundred students, almost having them all pre-enroll is pretty, pretty awesome. Right now we are looking at a new schedule for next year, which I do have available.
If you can hand that out.
Yes.
And talk about some of the changes that we've looked at making. Yeah. And this has been a collaborative effort with Mr. Flowers, Mr. Brumgarth, the VLT, and staff input as well.
Uh, some of the things that are different, uh, classes would only be forty-one minutes rather than forty-seven, along with placing a homeroom time in the middle of the day. The point of that, one part was teachers were frustrated with students returning from lunch very loud and, you know, taking out from instructional time. Because of that, we found putting homeroom, giving a designated time for students to read, and do our social-emotional curriculum, along with other items just to build into that timeframe. It would be best in the middle of the day. Um, along with that, placing a homeroom at the end of the day for students to not be missing due to sports. Currently, during the homeroom time would also be title pullout. That way, we can create an MTSS in the middle school to make sure we are meeting the needs of all of our students.
So in the past, if a student is not at grade level for math or reading, they were funneled into a specific class, so they may take their title math class, and they take an actual math class. What this would actually do is be able to have their math class, have pullout time for them to focus in on, say, math skills, reading skills, those areas, but then it would free up and allow them to be able to take more electives as well. Um, because what we were finding was that students that were taking both that pullout or that, that title math and their math class were unable to go to electives. So they were being punished, and you know, what, what we find is lack of motivation whenever that takes place. Um, so this would separate that timeout, um, to allow for um, students to be able to take electives throughout the day.
Which was one of the big things. We wanted to make sure students had choice in their education. Now, if, if you're choosing your class, it, you, you have a lot more buy-in into the learning, whereas, well, you're struggling here, so now you don't get to take a class you enjoy. One of the bigger concerns, I would say, that people had was taking vocal and band. Um, for sixth graders, currently, all sixth graders are required to take vocal. Next year, the goal is to have every student just choose vocal or band, and then the other one can be an elective option. There was concern that putting the two against each other would harm one's program compared to the other. At this time, looking at fifth grade's enrollment, we actually saw a rise in uh, bands enrollment, and we were sitting at below thirty percent of the students not choosing vocal as a top choice. And most of them will still end up with vocal because of the limited number of electives offered to sixth graders. So we'll actually end up with more students participating in both.
And, and the sixth grade vocal?
Currently is first and third hours, which will stay similar to what it was this year. Their ending time will be about twelve minutes earlier than it is currently, just because of the changing amount of time, which then makes zero change to sharing with other buildings.
And then uh, review the PE, what, what you're?
So currently, all sixth graders take PE for a whole year. Uh, seventh and eighth graders choose a PE, strength and conditioning, or introduction to weights for a full year. Um, what we're currently looking at is going down to a semester minimum. Then they can choose to extend PE for another semester, or introduction to weights, strength and conditioning, making it an elective, making it so those students who want to do more physical activity can, but opening up again, more chance to choose in what their classes are.
I, I guess my question would be, it hasn't been that many years ago that the state was pushing for more PE time, especially in the elementarys and probably even into the middle school. Does this affect or conflict with any guidelines that the state?
Currently, no. So the amount of time they would receive meets the state requirements for all sixth through eighth grade, grade band. That, and from what I'm viewing through most of the enrollment so far, most students have placed PE or introduction to weights between fifth and sixth graders as their top three choices. So most of them are choosing to extend their, their PE abilities throughout the year.
Any other questions on the scheduling at middle school for next year?
I'm just a little concerned that down the road, we're gonna pay a price for music, band and vocal, because we've offered other electives, and that's what scares me.
Absolutely, um, and as I've talked with the music teachers, my, my goal is not to eliminate music by any means. Um, I wasn't a music student between both band and vocal. Uh, my goal is to alleviate the behavior piece of it. We, we do have students who are in certain classes because they have to, and because of that, they take away from the environment, um, causing more strain on other students' experience. This year, li- like I said, we are seeing an uptick for fifth, sixth graders going into seventh grade, choosing to take vocal. Very excited by that. One of the things I've, I've heard regularly is they just wish certain students weren't taking from their environment. And same from some of those students who struggle, they wish they could have chose to take a different class instead. My goal, honestly, especially for the sixth graders, is not to create a bunch of electives so they won't choose it. Right now, like I said, there, there's only four electives other than taking the other music option. So unless you're willing to take all four of those electives, you end up taking both.
I guess my concern is if they drop out of vocal in the first semester, they jump in second semester, they're already behind the eight ball when it comes to state competition.
So that is where vocal and band are a year long. There, there's no dropping out midsemester. It, you're in it for the long haul. You're committing to the year. And, and that, we, we're standing a firm ground of, if you join band, you're under the expectation that you will start it and finish it. If you join vocal, you will start it and finish it. Um, 'cause you're exactly right. We want us to, when we go to league contest, we do well. We want our students to be able to be, you know, celebrated, because they've all had a chance to work together. And when, when it comes to seventh and eighth grade, that has, that requirement hasn't changed at all. That, this is keeping seventh and eighth grade the exact same as it's been for, since at least this year that I've been here, but from what I hear in the past as well. The only difference is the sixth grade choice.
Any other questions? Thoughts? If not, thank you. Thank you for bringing that to us.
Absolutely.
Mr. Mason?
Good evening. Busy week at the high school. Um, first of all, we did complete our state assessments last week uh, for language arts, uh, science and math. Like Mrs. Callen said, we were selected by the state to get um, audited on how we, how we do our state assessments. We passed all the tests, so that means we're following the protocol as we need to, so I guess that's good. Um, we are starting our fast bridge spring screeners this week as well. Uh, s- the seniors take their finals tomorrow, Wednesday, so Wednesday, three-twenty-five, they're done with school. Hard to believe already. Graduation practice will be Thursday morning at eight o'clock at the Activity Center with a breakfast, and we will follow that with the senior walk with pride, so that's coming up this week. Um, but then graduation is Sunday until you guys have that on your calendars, right? One forty-five or so, um, we'll meet behind the stage as always, and then we'll um, get lined up and go. Um, at this point, um, Dean has told me um, a diploma that he would like to give out. Okay, so if there's any diplomas that you guys would like to give out, just let Mr. Crowder know or let me know, and I'll make sure you guys have that student in your stack. We had our senior awards assembly uh, last Tuesday. Um, in general scholarships, mainly, mainly given out here locally, we gave away eighty-three thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. Um, and then academic and athletics through the colleges, the students received a hundred and seventy-nine thousand, three hundred and thirty, uh, for a grand total of two hundred and sixty-two thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars, given out this year to the senior class, so. Um, that'll be money put to good use, I'm sure. Finals for the rest of students will be May sixteenth and seventeenth. Um, and we are planning our summer credit recovery session again this year, starting uh, May thirty-first, running it through June fifteenth, Monday through Thursday, um, eight to eleven in the morning. Um, at this point, I'm expecting at least eight to twelve students to show up for that and try to recover at least one half credit that they um, been at pass throughout this year, so. With that as a reminder, we're funded to do that, so hopefully we have a good turnout for that. Uh, and Mr. Kraft's uh, reported he'd give the results from the state music. Was it in there?
Did.
Okay. I'm sure some of you probably have heard this, but uh, our band, uh, class took quite a few students there. Um, and again, one is an excellent score and two's outstanding, so our percussion ensemble did receive a one. That was Kyler Zarnik, Taylor Kaiser, Casey Keener, Nathan Norvell, Ma- Mison Sin. The wind ensemble uh, scored a two. That'd be Canberra Ball, Stephen Damel, Lauren Higgins, Tamari Howard, Kyle Rogers, Bodhi Selfridge, and Kaylee Shives. Percussion solo, Kyler Zarnik received a one. Saxophone solo, Stephen Damel received a one. Flute solo, Lauren Higgins received a two, and clarinet solo, Kaylee Shives received a two. Um, and then also Joshua Ball um, received a two rating on his vocal solo, so. Joe Seiball, what did I say? I'm sorry, Joe Seiball. So uh, music kids um, performed well for us at state this weekend, so. All right, any questions?
Uh, one thing I did see in the news, and this is more Mr. Kraft's item, but he's not here tonight, so I'll ask you.
Okay.
Uh, looks like they're changing state wrestling next year.
Okay. I had heard that, that was talked about.
Yeah, the Hayes has a conflict, so they're rolling boys and girls together at Salina. And it'll be Thursday, Friday, Saturday at Salina, so it'll make for a long.
That'll be interesting. That'll be a long three days, and Salina's not done a great job of hosting girls.
No, they haven't. I mean, I know it's kind of small potatoes, but I mean, e- even like a hospitality room for coaches and administration, bus drivers, whatever, they, Tony Spitzer will not allow them to have a hospitality room, so you have to buy it from the concession stand. That's small, but I think the seating's giving an issue.
The limiting of the, um, the limiting of the, the coolers too.
Yeah.
I mean, they, they limited the number of coolers, so I'm hoping that Kase will correct some of that, 'cause, you know, you, you've got kids sweating, and then you're sending them out in the cold to get coolers and, and food out of their, out of their vehicles. So that's, that was an issue uh, a couple of years ago.
I think seating capacity will be a major issue.
Probably, yeah.
Yeah.
But it, from what I read in the, in the news, the first two rounds would be on Thursday, and then consolation rounds Friday, and then the championship rounds on Saturday.
Every wrestler wrestle two matches on Thursday. They'll do the consolation rounds on Friday, and then the championship rounds on Saturday.
Yeah, okay.
Friday's gonna be a long day.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, it uh.
It's gonna be tight. It's gonna be tight, in case there had to.
So uh, we've had requests in the past for early dismissal or dismissal of school for state events. I would anticipate we would, should have a substantial number of kids potentially qualified for state next year. I know you've already approved the, we've already approved the calendar, but is that something that first day to consider an early dismissal or?
I will say in the past, um, we had always canceled school on Friday if, if the boys took plenty to state, and we might get fifteen or twenty students show up.
Okay.
Um, and then when we kept school in session, but excused kids to go on with parental consent, we'd get sixty-five, seventy kids there. So, you know, if you cancel school district-wide, you won't have the showing.
Okay.
Yeah.
That was just a thought, 'cause I know in the past, we have made
Yeah.
accommodations for teachers and students to go.
Sure.
So then did the kids check in with somebody when they, okay, that's what I thought I did.
Yeah, Bus Club would pay their way in, so I'd go up with a bunch of cash. They'd have to check in with me, and if they sign up for the money, I'd just give them their cash back, so they paid to get in, I'd give them their cash back, and they all sit in one area. We've been doing it for years, and it's always really, really good. We have a big, big showing for that.
So I, I was just trying to think of possibilities of what that.
Yeah, in a perfect world, we cancel school. We get most of the kids up there, but it probably won't happen.
Vacation.
It's right, yeah, there really is.
But it, but it sounds like that's gonna be a challenging three days for
Yeah, I can imagine.
coaches and, and students.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. I had not heard that yet.
Yeah, they said there's a conflict scheduling at Hayes was, I think last year they had to cancel some activities.
I know one year there was a, uh, an issue with, with Hayes on a Saturday, so we did wrestling on Thursday, Friday, I believe. But, you know, we've had wrestling at Hayes forever. It's just hard to believe there's a conflict now, but it is their facility, so. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Joel.
See you Sunday.
Yeah.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Crowder?
Sure, and Mr. Kraft's is on there. Um, you know, just some highlights um, from his uh, you know, we did add, uh, Russell Track Meet got canceled, so we picked up Southeast of Celine um, for this coming Friday. League track is the eleventh with regionals on the nineteenth in Garden City. Uh, baseball has two double headers left. They'll be starting regionals that we will be hosting on the fifteenth and the seventeenth. And so we are hosting uh, that baseball. Softball, as well as two double headers left on the fifteenth and sixteenth um, for regionals. And then boys tennis has league today. They are finishing that up with the regionals on Thursday at Trigo. Boys golf has league on the ninth and regionals on the fifteenth. And um, our forensics teams will compete at state this coming weekend as well, so. Um, for um, excuse me, while I pull up my notes. Sorry, it's been one of those days. I don't have a lot. Um, just to update, uh, Suburban Eleven, the deer ran into us. Uh, it is in the shop getting replaced. Um, I don't think the parts are gonna be an issue. Uh, that was gonna be, that was gonna be one of the concerns. There's been kind of a rash of vehicles have been hit by deers, or deers have hit them, and parts have been kind of a concern, so I think, I think we're in the clear there, so. Um, I do want to update you. Uh, I did receive an email uh, last Friday. Uh, a great piece of email to finish off the, the week. Uh, the AC chiller, uh, the Activity Center chiller got moved back to July twenty-first, so. So hopefully, we're only thirteen months into this deal, so hopefully we'll be uh, able to make it through. So as of, as of right now, knock on wood, um, things seem to be working pretty well, so. So, KSTE came out last Friday as well. Kansas State Department of Education came out last week to go ahead and finalize our kids audit. So, just a reminder, we approve our budget in September. We go all year, and then they come out in somewhere between February and May and give us our final numbers that we get to finish out the year and finalize the budget with. So, we should have finalized numbers on that here pretty soon. So, overall, things look pretty good. Kathy did a great job of, you know, having all of the information available as she wrapped up, and then, and then Jordan stepped in and was able to find some information as we needed it. So, so that, that went pretty well last week, and he was, the gentleman was able to wrap that up before he left. Skyward, we are progressing, as I said. We did provide some information of some of the, some of the payroll runs. And when I say payroll runs, some of the runs of checks that we've done. That's just one of the examples of, of reporting that we can give. I was also approached to see if we wanted to go ahead and continue the cooperative agreement of CKCA. We have had some students reach out to the middle school. If that is a possibility, and we agree to, to continue that agreement, we, we do need to go ahead and, and agree to that in a motion and, and provide that access to those students if you would like to. Last year, we did not have any students, even though we did approve the, the agreement. But this year, they've, they've indicated that there's a possibility that there's some students that would like to come up and participate, you know, with our middle school students. Any discussion on that?
I would suggest we put that on the agenda for next month and discuss it.
Yep, that would be great. We'll have that on there. So, we'll get that going.
Try to find out just a rough number even of what they're thinking.
Numbers, sure, absolutely.
Just a thought to keep in mind, we have to have the form sent to Kase or by June one for fall sports.
Does it have to be done for, for June one?
June one is for fall sports, yeah.
June one's fall sports. There's no getting around that one?
Even though the form's not online.
Oh, so they did, they did get back to you?
He has not, but it's just grayed out.
Okay.
It's available.
Okay. I'll get you some more information by the end of the week and include that if we need to do a quick meeting.
That, and the possibility of some teacher approvals between now and June one.
Maybe. Yeah, we can find some teachers.
I would like to have more information before we.
Yeah, sure. That would be fine.
Yeah, but I prefer not to just have a report and then act on it.
Right, right.
It's kind of the practice to have information before we jump into something.
I agree with that. I agree with that.
And hopefully, we have some teacher nominations to.
Yes, to act on.
To act on.
To act on between now and then. Last thing, I did include, you know, we've talked about getting rid of this turf. Option one, foot-by-foot squares will be cut and sold over the Labor Day weekend. I know Faren and I have talked about that, and I'll, I'll be working on that. Option two, the full rolls of turf will be available, and there's a form that I included with that for people to come in, and I will, I will actually get this out to the newspaper, social media, and those as well. Information, they need heavy equipment. They'll be, they'll be required to have heavy equipment to get those rolls. It'll be seven and a half feet wide and the width of the football field. So, it's not just gonna be, Don and I are gonna show up and put it in the back of my pickup, those types of things. I set it at two hundred and fifty dollars. Is that too expensive?
Do you think we have people interested in buying it?
Mm-hmm. If, if I set it at two hundred and fifty dollars and nobody's interested in getting it, then, then I will probably drop the price. I mean, if they're like, oh, my gosh, two hundred and fifty dollars, it's too expensive then. So, I'm, I mean, that's definitely something I can drop the price on, but we will be in communication with them. The biggest thing that I want people to understand is that when the truck rolls out, we're stuck with whatever's left. So, if somebody commits to three rolls, and we've already got our three rolls that, that we're gonna take, then we're stuck with those three rolls, and we can't just take them to the landfill. So, so that's why I kind of set it at two hundred and fifty dollars to say we kind of need a commitment at that point in time. The end zones are something that people have talked about. That'll be kind of a first-come, first-served. Those people that are interested to get those end zone if they're, if they desire that. And I set that May twenty-fourth. I'm pretty sure that'll be a, a good date that we'll be able to, to make sure we get those final commitments. And then the, the other piece of the turf that has been of highest interest has been the Cardinal. So, basically, at the end of football camp, just before ATG comes in with their cutting equipment, the Cardinal will probably disappear, and we'll do a silent auction for the, for the Cardinal. I'm hoping to be able to do, now, I don't know that I'll be able to sling it over my shoulder and walk down the street with it, so that may not just all of a sudden disappear. But, but I'm hoping that I can get ahold of, um, like, the, the chamber online auction that they use and see if I can use that. Otherwise, it might just be a silent auction type of, of deal up here at the acti, up here at the district office that people would come in and write down their bids.
You're gonna go a couple of yards around it?
Yeah, yeah. I wouldn't just cut it right on the, yeah, yeah. Give, give a little bit of space. I mean, the Cardinal is ten yards wide, so if we go, you know, if we go fourteen yards wide, and it's, it's about ten yards tall, so it'd be about a fourteen yard by fourteen yard square that'll be, that'll be cut out of the middle of the football field at some point in time, so. So, is everybody in agreement with that? Okay with that? We've talked about it forever, and it's that time. Hopefully, things roll well with that, so. If nobody has any questions or concerns, I've, that's all I have at this point in time.
Board member reports. Anybody have anything? As Mr. Crowder said, I did sit in on the bid opening for the HVAC and then came back for the presentation, so.
Appreciate your time on that. Not exactly the most interesting.
It's a lot of technical items discussed. Legislative update.
I did include this today, the SQUE newsletter. If you have a chance to read through that, it is semi-encouraging. The legislature wrapped up about ten o'clock on Friday night. And then if you skip down to paragraph four, they did pass a, they did pass a school budget bill, which, which is a good, which is a good thing. I'm glad they did that. A couple positives in that is they extended the high density at risk to twenty-twenty-seven, which we take full advantage of that. They also, if I'm reading this correctly, this is the first information I'm hearing about it, but they included fully funding K-12 education for two years. So, I think that's, that's a move in the right direction, and that, that would be the three-year average of the Consumer Price Index. So, this year, we go from four thousand eighty-six dollars to five thousand eighty-eight dollars. So, an increase in base state aid is that, is that approximately a hundred dollars per student for base state aid. One change that they did make in that bill was instead of looking two years previous for our count, the higher of the two past years, it would be either looking back at one year back or what our enrollment is on September twentieth. So, there are districts out there that are growing, and they requested the option to be able to look at their current year's enrollment and be able to do their budget based on that. Whereas, it hurts schools that are in declining enrollment because they can't look at two years back. They can only look at one year back. So, that passed the House eighty-three to seventy-three, Senate twenty-three to sixteen. So, it goes to the governor to see what the governor will do. And there are some other pieces of information in here that I'll let you look at. They did not fully fund special education. And then they, there was some other things that were passed along the way that, that does affect the policy. But there are things that were in a lot of the early bills that didn't get passed, and we're pleased with that as well. So, it did, it did change a little bit of the voucher system, but it didn't go the full voucher system that we were afraid could potentially happen. And a lot of that, I think, came down to people reaching out to their legislature and saying, this is not what we agree to, and also, a lot of people reaching out and saying, we, we want clean bills and not a bunch of bills that are full of policy. And so, they did, they did hear that. So, I've, I've, I've heard that two or three times, that legislators kind of in the middle have, have really pushed back around these big budget bills that have a bunch of policy, and I'm glad to hear that, so.
Any questions on any of the legislatures? And I really haven't heard whether the governor's indicated whether she would sign that or not.
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't heard anything, so.
And their tax bill, they couldn't override her veto of that.
Correct. Yep, it died.
So, there's no tax changes this year?
Yep.
Anything else? Not, good item nine, consideration of district personnel. I move, we go into executive session for fifteen minutes pursuant to non-elected personnel exception under coma for the purpose of discussing nominations and resignations with Mr. Crowder present. The open meeting will resume at eight forty. Let's try that. Motion been made in second. Is all in favor?
Oh, sorry. Oh, Jesse says yes.
Okay. opposed, motion carries six-zero.
Coming back in from executive session with the following motion, I move to accept the resignation of Jennifer Steiner, Samuel Hill and Mary Schriddy.
Second.
Which been made in second in a other discussion, not all in favor? Pose, motion carries six zero. Moved accept the nomination of Emily Mooney for the position of middle school seventh and eighth grade, should that be science?
Yes, science.
Science, as presented.
Second.
Which has been made in second, the discussion, all in favor? Pose, motion carries six zero. Uh, I move, we go into executive session for fifteen minutes with Mr. Krauthus present for the purpose of pursuant to non, uh, pursuant to student information exception under coma for the purpose of discussing student information.
Second.
And we re, come back in at nine o'clock. Motion been made in second, it all in favor? Pose, motion carries six zero.
(laughing)
I might talk for a long time, Don. Uh, come out of executive session with no recommended motions, I move we go into executive session for fifteen minutes pursuant to discussion, discuss the exemption for employee, employee, employer, employee negotiations under coma to discuss negotiation training and negotiation letters information with Mr. Krauthus present. The board will open meeting resume at, uh, nine fifteen.
Second.
Which been made in second, it all in favor? Pose, motion carries six zero.
They all re-racing the motion.
Yeah.
Come back in from executive session with the follow- with no recommended motions.
I move to adjourn. Second.
Motion been made and seconded to adjourn. All in favor? Pose. Motion carries six zero. Thank you all for your patience tonight.
Hey, I have a question for you Patrick before you leave.
Okay.